Follow me in order at 7:02. Roll call.
Ed Marcus.
Gary Chu.
Sean Harvey.
Randy Snead.
Erica Burton.
Derek Jones.
Nathan Malaney.
Please stand for the pleasure of the region.
The pleasure of the region is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from 2:1523.
I'm going to accept the minutes.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from 2:1523. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Susan's input. You hear about the mowing contract.
Correct.
Now let's go, all business, attorney.
I'll start there. I'll start with that mowing contract. I know that we had one bid. I think that bid, well, I know that bid. I left it here.
It's right there.
There we go. So, and let me take a look at that again. But there was only one bid from Premier Turf Solutions, Mr. Albert Hanselman. He had a bid for $22,000 to take care of the cemetery mowing project from April 15 to November 1 of this year. And that's the bid that we have for your consideration. That's a one and all.
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Albert Hanselman to provide the cemetery mowing for the year 2023.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Premier Turf Solutions for the amount of $22,000. Any further comments on any of that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got it, buddy.
Thank you for bidding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for working last year and you hope to be again this year.
That's what I'm saying.
You want me to say this?
No.
I mean, I can bring that up or talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. I know that, just counsel so that you're aware, I know that we went through this process. Albert submitted this bid. He's obviously the successful bidder. Now I've got a contract here for you, Albert, but I know that after this process had kind of been started, he expressed a desire to have a contract for a longer term, three years. That really put us under a time crunch in terms of advertising things, getting it back out, and we weren't certain as to who might necessarily bid or not bid. We knew that probably Albert would bid because he expressed that desire. But it is something to consider for the years to follow. If we're happy and satisfied with the job he's doing, you may want to consider making that a longer term. So you don't have to do this from year to year and it gives a little more security to Albert to having that position if he's doing a good job. But it was kind of late in the game to mess around and advertise, get that in, get that accepted, and get that going by April 15.
Did you help us last year finish up out there?
Correct. Yep, I did the entire season.
He did a great job.
Yeah.
And I had talked to Derek about maybe doing this one for three years rather than one after the fact that we bid it out, and we just couldn't get it done before April 15, so.
No, that's not a problem. I just, you know, and what I told Lisa, so you all know, is that I would freeze my price. So the security part of that, and I did that with the fairgrounds, and as soon as I did that, gasped for the $5 a gallon from 2:15. But that was on me. And the idea was that you'd have security. Lisa planned her budget exactly what the cost is going to be instead of, and since you're getting fewer and fewer bids all the time, you would have the security of knowing, okay, this is taken care of over the next few years. That was, that was my suggestion to her, and then if you don't want to do that or anything, you're not going to offend me. It was just an idea of then.
Well, I think next year we will. It's just that we ran out of time this year, so.
Had we known before we got this far down the process, I would not have been opposed to that either.
And I thought I was going to see you before tonight, so I was going to.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
It would have been reassuring to you. I would, you know, going to next year, I would have no problem with that.
So we'll play this game again next year.
Okay.
And it may well be something that we advertise for a longer period of time, maybe three years. Obviously, you need to submit a bid, and we have to consider all the bids, and not necessarily the lowest bid, but it's the lowest responsive and bid that we are comfortable with. So, that being said, I do have, this is the, it's a contract, it's the specifications, it's the same thing that was printed in the paper, but this is something, I'm going to let you have that.
Okay.
Take a look at it, but it'll need to be signed and back to the council here. Whenever you're comfortable. It's the same thing as published.
We left the zero off. It's 2200.
Yeah.
I'll get that back for a license sometime.
Let's throw that as a typo.
That's fine.
It is that one. I'm not going to say it. Guys, the other thing I had to talk about, and you tell me if you want to talk about somewhere else, but there was a, there's a grant contract. It's with Priority Project Resources, Inc. It's that Shannon, what was her last name?
McLeod.
McLeod. I got that this week. I took a look at that. I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary. We've dealt with her before. And we'll say it's a total price of $58,000. Some of that money has already been paid just because she's already done some work on this matter. If anybody has any questions about that, they're welcome to ask. I do know that the contract talks about that we can terminate this contract within a point in time within 30 days written notice, and that's kind of a pro rata situation if we would decide to do that. And I think town's been happy with what she's provided for us, and obviously town just was a booker, a very substantial grant, so good for Shannon. So I'm just letting you know that I've looked that over. I have reviewed that. I didn't see any red flags. I didn't see anything concerning. That's what I found.
So we have to vote that Randy can sign it? Because there's only Randy's signature.
Right. It is. It's probably best to have a council vote to say that yes, we would accept that service agreement, or no, you don't, or you want to counter, or whatever.
I'll move to accept the agreement from Priority Project Resources Incorporated for the water utility improvement project grant administration.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the grant from Priority...
Project Resources.
Priority Project Resources Incorporated for the amount of $55,000 of the. So we have any further comments on that? It's $50,000, I'm sorry.
I saw you said 58.
It's 58. I gotta look for this out.
Okay, five and three. Okay, I see it. The labor standards, the environment review, so $58,000. Any further comments on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's signed.
And that is all I have to report.
Motion to accept the attorney report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comments? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. Salary ordinance 2023-01.
And this was passed at the last meeting on the first reading. So, the front page has been fixed to. Yes.
Well, actually, it would be up, the seeming it would be up for a second and third reading. If it's, there's a motion to pass it, it would be a motion to pass it on the second and third readings. Unless somebody has some kind of amendment, so they want to do something different. But that's, those are kind of the options.
I would move to pass it on the second and third reading.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to pass the salary ordinance 2023-01 on the second and third reading. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one passed.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I got Gary to sign it, so everyone has signed on it, talked on it. Any other old business? I've got another resolution here. It's not on the.
There's a resolution. It's really kind of another park board opening, I would think.
This one is, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry. I thought I fixed this, but. It's Resolution 2023-03.
Well, the paperwork says 02. The downtown parking is 03.
Okay, 02, that's.
Well, wait, 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 wait. We got an ordinance versus a resolution, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So the resolution.
The resolution is 02.
Yeah, the resolution is 02. That's, that's the part.
And the other one is 03, sorry.
Because it's an ordinance. It's not a resolution.
It's 02. I just forgot to write.
So I don't have the paperwork for the downtown parking?
Nope. I'll go print it out after we're done.
So what we want to do.
I got it right here if you want to read it quick.
Well, I think I've got it too.
Well, Derek's got a copy right here.
I do.
I put it in your packets. I just forgot to print it. But right now, we're on the resolution.
Well, to be honest, it's under the park board opening on the agenda.
Right.
Okay?
So.
With that, with that item on the agenda, there is a resolution. And that's Resolution 2023-2.
Yeah.
And it is a waiver of those political party requirements, and I can, I can explain that and talk about that if you'd like.
Well, do we have any other old business though, other than that?
That may be the first thing to take care of and knock out before we move on to new business on the agenda.
Yeah.
No.
We can go ahead and take care of the resolution.
Well, do you have any other old business?
Yeah, any other old business? Do you have to?
No, there's, according to my, to the agenda, there's nothing on there.
That's the question we have to ask. Is there any other old business?
Do we have any other old business? Okay.
I saw you ask that.
All right. So now we're going to move on to new business. Park board opening, Resolution 2023-02 waiver.
Okay, and let me give you a little introduction about what we got going on here, but at the last meeting, there was a desire to appoint Damon Pinkley to the, the park board. That is a town council appointment. But I do know, and my notes are pretty lacking, but I do know that there was an issue with his political party requirements. And so there is a provision in Indian and Code that allows us to do a waiver. That's best accomplished through this resolution. That says we're waiving those political party requirements, and that we want to have Damon Pinkley appointed to the park board. So that's what this resolution would accomplish, and that would effectively allow you to appoint him on the park board in regards of political party affiliation.
I move to approve Resolution number 2023-02.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number 2023-02, the waiver of political party. Any further comments?
I have a question for Derek. On that waiver, is there any requirement down the road that if somebody of the other political party seeks that position, that we have to honor that? Or this, this waiver is all seeking, you don't have to, we totally ignore that clause from here on out, or just this position?
It's only for the appointment of Damon Pinkley. That's it.
So it's all one by one basis?
Yeah, so next time somebody would come before the council and say, I would like to be appointed to the park board, we have to consider that again. Could we do another waiver? Yes, we could. Do you have to? No, you don't. But it's something you have to consider on a candidate by candidate basis.
Sure. Thank you.
I have a question too, since I wasn't here the last meeting. Last time, we had three or four people that were searching, seeking that spot. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
Sounds about right.
How did we come down to just Damon?
Seeking recommendation from the park board.
Park board recommendation and then just taking into consideration the other, the other ones that applied. Damon was, we felt Damon was. There were no Democrats, by the way, that, from my understanding, that had applied.
I.
Just knowing who the other market is, let's put it that way. It's hard to find a Democrat. Well, I mean.
Did you say Goodwin's?
I almost armed that little.
I just asked.
Give me your pen. I'm gonna take this pen. Hang on. Well, give me your phone.
Okay. So all in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Sean, I didn't say that.
Okay, we have ordinance 2023-3. This is an ordinance, an ordinance amending section 72.04 of the code of ordinances. This is a parking code.
So you guys ended on your agenda, then we did a workshop and stuff like that, but you also asked me to kind of look into what it would take to, to change that, so I, I brought forward the old ordinance and Derek and I kind of took into consideration what Jill Huiyan had said when she was in here, what Log House has stated in the past about parking. And you can look it over. You don't have to pass it too much. You can table it, and you can have a discussion on it, or you can, but we can't keep changing it. These street signs are $50 to $70 apiece.
Well, and I, before we even, I guess, go to that point, I guess, and maybe we should table it, but my question is, are we, first of all, are we doing this and then again, have no enforcement of it going on? Are we just doing it to keep it on the books? Are we doing, I mean, when was the last time parking tickets were written between 5:00 AM and 6:00 PM for being there longer than two hours, I guess? I mean, are we continuing to, to fill the books with ordinances that we're not enforcing? Or, I mean, what are we doing?
Before we just kind of, before we suspended it from the construction downtown, the override officer had written several tickets and knocked on several doors about the parking there that wasn't supposed to be. So yes, there was tickets written while the old policy did. I could bring those. I don't have those with me, but they're, they are in prior to years report that the police chief sends down to us. And he also had gave us an update back then that they had wrote tickets as what kind of roughed the scenario up to go up and put, because we didn't realize how infringing that the construction was, and then we suspended it because they were writing tickets. And we were catching up for that, so.
So is this how it was read, this is how it read?
This is actually probably better than it was before. Because Mississauga was in and had complaints about, and I, I get it. My only concern with this is, has Jamie looked at it to see if those times would be okay to clear the snow without having vehicles up there? That's my only concern.
Well, that was one of the things we discussed, because that wasn't in there originally, and we put in there, we have to have a window where there's no cars up there. So that's why we did that.
I agree 100%. That's what I want to make sure that we have that window built into this policy before we pass it.
That 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM is a big enough window?
Well, yeah, if there's no cars up there, we can do it pretty quick.
But I'm just saying.
Well, we did six originally, and then we had the log house complaining because they opened at 5:00.
Because normally I'll pull somebody at 5:00 to do it, and we're out of there by 6:00 or 7:00, but I'll have to pull guys in earlier, so. But it's not like it's, we get a lot of snow all the time, so.
It's been a rough winter.
Yeah, this year.
Just so you're clear, definitely, this is a change to what we currently have. So you're aware of that.
Yes. Because right now, there's not a limit.
No.
I don't think there's a 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM.
Well, that I think is there. I just meant it's two hours from 5:00 AM until that 3:00 AM. And then there was a 3:00 to 5:00.
There's 3:00 to 6:00 right now, I think, and that's what Log House had said, that, you know, they have farmers that come in at 5:00 AM. And so I took that into consideration. I took what Jill said into consideration. Most of our businesses downtown, other than the three establishments, close at like 5 o'clock. And so that was just a consideration. Now, you are more than willing, or you're more than welcome to look it over. They decide what you want to do. It was just a recommendation. We had, we kind of tabled this for months and months, so.
I'm, I'm fine with it. First of, my only question was Jamie's input as to if he had enough window built in there. It takes in all the considerations of the two business owners that had problems with the last one. It does do that. I'm okay with that. And if we do decide to pass this, I'll just, out of the eyes of the police department, I would say, you know, hey, we passed this, start enforcing the parking again. And this is the new ordinance. And I can do that easy enough. Your concern about tickets and stuff will be handled, because it is an issue getting people to get right out of there. I mean, it is. I hate to give anybody a ticket unnecessarily, but if you don't follow the rules, I mean.
Well, they've got a bigger parking lot now.
Yes.
More space to park.
There's more parking up there now.
There's no reason that they should be parking along the street, especially at those timeframes.
Okay, but the next part of that is, is they are parking all the way around the new park up here, whether it be the backside or on the street even.
And that's something that Jamie, Doug, and I were talking about, like at the new police station. If you're going to have driveways pulling out there, right now, they're allowed to park along Walnut. And it's very hard to see around those vehicles. So this only takes care of the downtown parking. I would say that we need to address parking on the backside of the park, you know, in those two spaces, you know. You also would need to address the parking in front of Log House on both sides of Walnut. It's a state highway. They're not supposed to park, you know.
That's my question too. I mean, we're, we're making all this stuff. Is there anything with the state? I mean, these are state roads. They're not ours, so. Do we need to get with them to find out?
So maybe we do need to table this.
Well, the last time we talked to Endot, they, didn't they tell us that the downtown was okay to restrict, but.
They said it's awful. I was involved in that first one. They didn't have a problem with that first one. They said it's a different than other towns.
Right. But, you know, I do think that if we're going to do Walnut, we need to talk to them about restricting parking along there. But then again, that like the party pack is going to have a party, or problem with that.
That's why there's a 10-minute sign.
Because there's a 10-minute sign in front of theirs.
We did this once.
So I don't know that.
Wrote a ticket there and got.
Right. So I, I mean, we do have other parking issues. This was just to kind of temporarily, when we opened the parking back up, it became a problem again. Because according to our ordinance, they should be writing tickets every two hours for any cars that are parked up there all the way up until 3:00 AM. So.
On Michigan Street?
On Michigan.
No, it's on the 6:00 PM.
It was.
5:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
No, on the other.
Oh, on the old.
On the old one.
On the one that we just, we passed it like a year ago or something, so.
Yeah, probably two years.
Two years ago. So, but I'm just telling you that replacing all these signs is expensive. I want to bring that up, so if you need time to think about this, let's.
I'd make a motion. We table it until we discuss this further.
I was okay with passing it on the first reading and then have them look, ask the state for sure. Then we'll get back. We can pass on the second and third. That's my thoughts.
I'm in agreeance with Ed. Until we find out more specifics in, because I don't want to mess with this again. I want it done and over with, so we need to make things more specific.
We got a motion, didn't you?
Yes, I will second that.
So we have a motion and a, and a second to table the downtown parking ordinance. Number 2023-3. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to see a bunch of people.
Pretty hard to get along with that.
Other new business?
What to have to bring up. We've had several discussions regarding the time clock and the time clock software. And I think I'm moving forward. I think we need to do away with our current time clock system and come up with a different time clock system. However, obviously, until that one is put into place, I think we need to leave the one we have currently. But I think that we, as the council, need to, I know you're upset, Lisa, about these issues, so. I would move that we go ahead and do away with the current time, time clock system and research and implement a new one.
All right. Okay, I have a question. Lisa, what are your thoughts on this?
Hold on, I'm going to tell them.
That's why I'm asking. I want to know now before we get knee deep into it.
I was, I was disappointed with the software, but everybody seems to love it now. I mean, Jamie likes it.
I love it.
Well, and, you know, the guys are getting used to it. I got some pushback from Cory on getting rid of it because his guys like it. But then, I, I will tell you, there was a time I was not happy with the software. It was not doing what it said it was going to, and it doesn't, but if we're just going to go back to paper time sheets, then that's, I, I mean, we've, right now, we're doing redundancy, because we're doing paper time sheets and we're doing this time clock software. And there has been problems. It's been a lot better in the two weeks, or the two pay periods that I've been trying to learn payroll and getting into it. It's starting to get a little bit better. The supervisors seem to be honing in on it. But it took me that one week, about six hours, to fix all the differences between the paper time sheets and what was in the system.
Okay, is the system, is there something going on with it that it's gotten better? Have they upgraded it?
No.
Okay, so.
It's just being, like I said, the supervisors have now started taking a look at what they're putting in rather than, you know, just handing, you know, kind of glancing over at signing the time sheet and then handing it off to us, and then we're fixing it all. I gave you guys the report. You asked for the report. You saw what was happening. You asked for the report. I didn't voluntarily get it to you, but you wanted to know how many times supervisors were punching people in and out, and how many times they were changing schedules, or, you know, adjusting for this or that, you know. So I gave you the report that I had. You looked it over. You know, I was not happy with it for a lot of, but I don't know if getting rid of this time clock software is the answer, or making people more responsible. But we also didn't like that idea, you know, if we make people more responsible and, you know, the first time they, you know, in our handbook, it literally states that if you turn in a wrong time sheet, it's a fireable offense. So you, I mean, how drastic do you want to get?
So it really, right now, what you, what you have, and it may get better. I don't know. You've got a glorified PTO system. Now, out of the, the three department heads, and I am not slamming anybody, Jamie probably does the best because he daily checks it. But we have one department that is over here two to four hours in a paper. They try to get their time figured out. They just can't. And some of that comes from full-time people come in other than their schedule. They just can't, and some of that comes from full-time people come in other than their schedule work. They don't, I'll use a fireman. They can't clock in. So it's hard to probably keep track of that. And like you said, there's a lot of redundancy. I mean, we're, they're having to do paper time sheets and they're having to do their clock in stuff and it just.
That's where, that's where I have the big concern. We're, we're spending hours doing something that we've put in a system to make it easier. But we're still doing what we were doing before. We put in the easier system. So I mean.
And I don't know, I'll use this example, not say this is right or wrong. If you went back to the old punch thing, you're still gonna have issues. Like over there, the fire, even the police, it might be, well, you may even have it here. If they come back at, they're out working, they come back at four thirty and Joseph's the last one here and goes to leave, he'll forget to punch out. Then you, we're gonna be the same thing we're doing now.
And I, I have those issues still, but I get on about every day and just go through it for a couple of minutes and, and make sure everything's right. And then.
From, from what, and obviously Jamie's department isn't a twenty-four hour, or from one of the, the things I understand, there's, it has big issues with the twenty-four hour shifts. There's a lot of redundancy, a lot of.
And there's some things where you talk tonight.
It is not very friendly with the twenty-four hour shifts.
He was having issues. They would punch in in the morning while show they worked a twenty-four hour shift because it didn't log the night before. And that's, I don't know if that's an everyday on theirs.
I'm gonna tell you that most of the problems that this software has is human.
Is probably all.
It's all the humans. It's, you know, that we have it set up so that it'll take on the twenty-four hour shift. But if somebody forgets to punch in or forgets to punch out, you have to go in and alter that time. And that's when it starts getting, you know.
But if you've got one department that's coming here spending four hours a week trying to get their time sheets, I mean, I, I think it's.
And I, I felt that exact same way because it was, I was using myself and Candy. So I would have Candy look at the time sheets. I'd have myself look at the time sheets just to try to get it figured out. Sometimes we had to drag Lori into it and I'm thinking, how many man-hours? I'm just figuring out time sheets, you know, but. The past two times have been better.
But you're still using the paper time sheets.
We are still using the paper time sheets because people tend to write down things on the paper that they forget to put into the system.
Well, and I like it for overtime because I have the guys write description of why they had overtime on that day. And I don't know if there's a place to do that on, on the other software, so. I mean, if we don't turn them back, both in, the supervisors can have both and we only do the.
But I will tell you, when we were using just paper time sheets, I have a couple of departments that fill them out like they were kindergartners with crayons. So, you know, it.
And then that's where you're going to use the shocking approach.
It was, you know.
Well, what if we would forget the time sheets and the software and just go to a mechanical punch clock?
Then, okay, but.
We'd have to have more than one.
So, so in that scenario, let's say Joseph is, you know, um, he comes in, I'm just picking on Joseph because I used his name, but. Um, let's say he comes in and, um. He, he's talking or something. He's like, oh, I forgot to punch out. Now Jamie has to go in and he has to cross that off on his time card and, you know, write on the right time and initial it and, you know.
I get that, but that's Jamie's, that's kind of his job though, as administrator and supervisor. And if that's an ongoing thing, then you need to have that discussion with your employee, Jamie, that this is a habit and habits like this aren't acceptable. I mean, it's anywhere else I've ever worked, if, if you forget to punch in or punch out, get away with that one or two times, but then it's like you're looking at some disciplinary actions.
I don't have a problem with it. So. It works for me.
So I, I guess what I would say, since she, I don't do payroll. I'm not in there, so I'm not, but I hear complaints when it was, but now Lisa, as she said, is doing it. So my suggestion would be at least to go one more cycle or two more cycles and see if that continues to get better. And maybe with her dealing with it. Are we in contract with this software?
Yes, and you do pay for it. I mean, paper time sheets are cheaper, honestly, but that's not, you know, a reason.
But, but. It sounds like it's cheaper all the way around and, you know, the people putting the man-hours in trying to figure out this wonderful system.
And the thing is, is, I'm sorry, make the employees accountable. They are not perfect. And it's not our place to cover their butts every time we turn.
I kind of agree with Erica a little bit on that stance and I'm not begrudging any of them, but. I, I've worked in a factory years ago and we'd get there, we stood, we weren't allowed to clock in until a certain time and you clocked in. If you weren't clocked in.
Really?
We'd go to lunch, you went, clocked out first before you did anything else and you clocked back in. And if you were one minute late, you got docked half an hour. It is that strict. And you clocked out at night or you, you had a trip to the office to freaking explain why you didn't clock out.
If you go back to just the paper sheet so people can write whatever they want, you know what I mean?
Well, that's what I feel.
So, I mean, it's one way or another, you know. I, I like it for, I'm starting to like it for the PTO part of it because the guys don't come in and go, hey, how many PTO hours do I have? You know, stuff like that. They have it right there on their phones. If they want to look it up, they can.
The thing is, we've had this system for a while.
Right.
It took a long time for people to get used to it, to realize how it works. We've had it long enough. They need to know that they're accountable. If you don't punch in, you're not gonna get paid. It's not always Jamie's place to fix it or Cory's place to fix it or Lisa's place to fix it. People need to be responsible. They are grown adults. Enough is enough.
Anything else, guys?
No.
Well, I, I, I kind of, I've kind of been a lull right now because. I'm weighing everything that Lisa presented and, and I totally agree with Erica. I think there's a level of. Responsibility that is lacking in that aspect and I totally agree with Erica on what she said. You know, that's way harder. We got the same kind of system with different use velocity, though. It works great. We love it. I mean, but you freaking clock in and you clock out.
But how many times do you fix it?
I don't fix it hardly ever on my two guys, but Larry has to fix it once or twice a week. And that's solely because, um. He fixes it because he got, excuse me, an employee got sent on a delivery. And from that delivery, told to clock out. Well, if you aren't within our geofence, you don't get credit for those hours because you clocked out out of the geofence. Larry goes in to fix that saying, I issued him. And, and there's a place in there he types in, I issued him to go home from there because he was a mile from his house and it's ten o'clock at night.
Right.
You know, those are the instances that he fixes.
And see, we were supposed to have a geofence.
Yeah, whatever happened to that?
The problem was, is that the geofence in this town covers all the way up to the downtown square and then further. I mean, we couldn't get it.
You have a geofence, though. It's just not as tight as you wanted it.
Well, when I, when I, this is why I got so mad at the software, because when I brought it to you, they told me that I could make that geofence within six feet of anywhere.
You just, they did.
And then when I bought the software and I put it into effect and everything, everybody, um, we found out that that was not the case. And then the salesman was like, well, I don't know who told you that. Well, I wouldn't have bought it if I, you know, that was the one thing that we were looking for was the geofence. And then it just started going downhill from there, you know. I get it, these guys haven't ever had to punch in, most of them. And it is a hard system to, it's, it's a hard habit to get into, but.
Well, I'll attest to that. When we changed, we changed from paper cards.
And we have, we have two departments, we have two departments that, you know, it's hard for them to punch in. When, you know, if they get an ambulance call, they're not gonna stop everything to make sure that they, they punch in and then get in the ambulance and go, you know. So then Mark has to adjust their time or, you know, whoever to say that they were here. But I will tell you, yes, there was a time, but I think in talking with the supervisors and stuff, they are working on getting that tightened down. Now, if you want to look into other software, other time clock software or something. I mean, I've already got money invested in this that I am not happy with because of the fact that it didn't do what it wanted and, you know, but.
Back to my question about the contract. Is it a, are we stuck with it for a period of time?
No. It's a quarter to quarter, I think, you know, contract. I'd have to pull it, but.
Your user license, is that a yearly user license?
It might be, but, I mean, we only pay it by the quarter, so, um.
I bet it's a yearly license, though.
I'd have to get it to Derek to look at before, you know, whatever the contract was, so. But I'm just gonna tell you, unless you have a better system, I wouldn't get rid of, I mean.
No, that's not my motion. Yeah, that's my motion.
If you, if you want to look at something else.
Until we get a different one, then.
But.
Yeah.
I mean, that was my motion, not to just totally do away with everything, but to get rid of that, the one we have.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second to look into a new time clock, uh, solution. And keep the current one that we have till we can find something that's a, a better system. Any further comments on this?
Yes. Hearing the discussion tonight, and I'm gonna place this to the council as much as anybody. You know, there's different systems, of course, well, there's, there's punch clocks, there's, you know, things that have security, you gotta use your finger, you know. What, what are we, are we interested maybe looking at another software type program even? I, I guess that's, my question is, is what is our parameters of.
My intent would be to whoever's doing payroll, if that's you or, or whatever, and even your department heads. You guys look at something that's gonna be user-friendly, we can do with the paper sheets and something that we don't have to spend hours every pay period trying to figure out. Something, I mean, different than what you have. It, it may be the same type of system that you have, but a system that does things totally different, where you don't have to do what you're doing now. So I mean, I guess I'd throw that back to the, whoever's doing payroll to, to, you know, do some research and then bring that back to us, but the one we've got now, I don't think is working.
Well, no, we were sold, I agree, we were sold to build goods on that. They did not hold their, um.
And that's of no fault of yours.
No.
Well, but, I mean, I'm the one that spent all the money on it and so it does make me feel like I wasted money.
No, I mean.
But.
You asked the town council and the council approved it. You just did.
No, I get it, but.
One of the major, one of the major decisions was is that the current one has ability to talk to the tower of software, the bookkeeping. That was the thing where the others did not. Now, that being said, if we would find something that is better than we have now. I'm not opposed to paying for some software guru to come in here and write a user interface to move stuff from that one to our book. I mean, we would be money ahead than paying the people who sit around four hours a day and adjust time sheets. Just to pay for a user interface to transfer that data.
Is this a software issue or a human issue?
Well.
I think it's.
I think, I think it probably is both.
You hear what I'm saying?
But that's what I'm saying. But I mean, just by getting a different time clock, I don't think it's going to solve everything. There are other things that have to be addressed that will go with the new software or the new time clock. Let's put it that way. That is my intent.
That ends my discuss, I mean, I, I just was, I appreciate the input there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Things we're gonna look into some kind of system.
I would ask Lisa to, and I know she's already busy, but to take a look at things and we'll have a workshop maybe in a month or so and she can, you know, give her some time to look at some stuff. Maybe if we spare time, we have some time to look at some stuff. You know, we could all maybe sit down and, when we have time and compare notes of, you know, what we think we're looking at and. And, you know, just, I think it's a bigger conversation and a bigger. It, it's a big deal. We have so many different departments and the way they operate are so much different from each other. I mean, there's no one system that's gonna be perfect.
Well, I know.
For all of them. I mean, we have to try to sort that out.
Any other new business? I have a couple of things. Um, I was asked by some citizens to bring this up. Do we have plans on making or creating a farmer's market?
We have, um, Joe Gruyan has, has actually put something out about if anybody would, you know, that we're kind of looking for somebody to do something in the downtown square, maybe one. But we need somebody to run it. So, um, and somebody that knows people that they can draw in for that kind of a thing, so.
I think Columbus has theirs on Saturday mornings, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in. In, I think.
I know Rochester, there's two on Saturday morning for the court house.
Urban was theirs. We wouldn't want to do it on the same day necessarily as all other.
I don't know. I, I think it'd be fun.
Right. No, I get it, but you have to just find somebody to run it.
Yeah, and people like to hop from town to town.
Yep.
Else's.
And we've got some of our local Amish that won't travel fifteen miles, you know, to the next town, so they'll, they'll come here. Do we know who we would talk to about that? To find somebody that would lead that? Who's responsible for that?
Are you taking that on?
If I have to, but.
If you, if you want to run a farmer's market, I guess that would be.
But I don't, I'm asking because I, I have no idea, but I'll be, I'll step in that role.
Nobody wants to just, nobody wants to take it and run with it, you know, so that, I don't know enough farmers to get a bunch together to, you know.
What about some of those citizens that brought that to you?
Well, exactly. That's where I'll go back to is to talk to those three other people, the citizens that talk to me and I'll go back to, what's your ideas here? Because I don't have any. I just know that.
It would be fabulous to have one. It's just, we need somebody that is like in charge, a point person that, you know, they're the ones that are gonna, like with TJF and Randy will tell you how much work that is. Um, you know, so you need somebody that's going to, you know, consult with the farmers and set up the booth spaces and stuff like that, you know. And somebody that's gonna organize it, make sure that these people have insurance in case they, you know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they put something out and somebody trips over it, you want to make sure they have insurance, you know, not just the town being responsible. The town will always be responsible on the backend, if you have it on our property, sort of like the parks and stuff like that, but if you want to get somebody to.
Gary, I would suggest you maybe find an attorney that's a farmer that could help you out too.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry, Derek. Well, I'm glad you did that.
But you could, you could contact Flir and see how they. Exactly. Definitely, definitely ask it around. I think, uh. Find out how it's done. Tom Kep still goes out?
Fred, you're.
Tom Kep, one of the people that's out with, he would give you. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's what I mean. Oh. Yep, we've got the property. I'll run around and person checking. The second thing that I have is more towards, I guess, maybe Mark. Even more people have expressed to me interest in trying to get a grocery store in town. Is there anything we can do to help town council-wise as far as alleviating costs for somebody to try to move into a building? Somebody you could talk to at the county to help funnel somebody that's looking to start a grocery store?
I'll tell you, I had the same question sitting in your seat in two thousand twelve.
Well, that was ten years ago.
Yep.
Thirteen years.
There's not, I mean, we can't go and put one in, obviously.
It's just, I look around all these, I know countless small towns that are way smaller than this and have a bustling grocery store.
And there are many that don't. It's just, I, I know what you're saying. It takes that person that can do it.
Yeah.
I.
But I mean, is there anything we could do to, to help bring that business here? Could you maybe look into that?
I could look into anything, but it's finding what. There's things like, you know, there's tax evasion, there's.
Yeah.
There's things that. A lot of there's private.
You gotta have somebody that wants to come to the town and can justify that they'll have enough business to keep a flirt.
Really, there's gotta be a private developer that wants to do it.
Yep.
And then the town can provide some level of assistance with the abatements and things like that, like you do with a sequel wire. But first up is you gotta find somebody that wants to do that.
The second step is to get the people in this town to shop there.
Well, yeah, but that's.
That's what it was.
The people were the ones that came to me, though, that wanted, so.
And they say that.
They're not.
Yeah.
And then they go somewhere else.
Saying, gosh, I'll overrate, there's sixty cents more than this implement.
Yeah. When I was a kid, there were two grocery stores in this town.
But they couldn't make it.
One uptown and one out here.
Yeah.
And then when they built the big superstores in Plumbah, that pretty much killed them. First one went out was the one downtown and the second one was parking shop.
Yeah, um, could you at least ask out, though, um, throw some feelers out, see if anybody's receptive out there?
I mean, we've worked on, I went into it many times, um, I talked to the Economic Development Corps leader, Dimpa, cause there was another community that did end up getting one and it was the same type of thing, they had the interest, somebody, they assisted. I, I mean, there's all sorts of ways I can find you that we could assist up to a degree.
Yeah.
But it's getting that, I mean, that person has to assume some type of level investment, cause I also don't know that it's a hundred percent right that we take all of those risks.
Right, no. Um, all right, I just wanted to throw it out to see, like I said, often asked, so.
You're good. I'm a good utilities.
And that's one of those things, you open that, that circle of life, that growth, and as, as this grows up, that this over here, they'll come eventually. And the bad thing is, it will be tomorrow, but hopefully.
Dollar to zero, just build another store.
Go more to the south side of town. Maybe one on the north side, you know?
Yeah, I wish we did, or had what we're doing, but. And we'll work on that, just, maybe something we can keep talking about, trying to.
All right, fair enough.
He's talking about.
All right. Let's go to claims, this is claims, uh, from.
Two fourteen to two twenty-eight.
Yes.
Or two twenty-seven, actually, so, um, the claims for this month are from the February fourteenth till February the twenty-seventh. Again, our, our meeting fell on the first day of the month, so you have low claims again, Randy, you should be happy.
I'm happy.
So.
That thing is real thin.
I know, so it's a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve claims from two fourteen, twenty-three to two twenty-seven, twenty-three, of a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept claims from two fourteen, twenty-three to two twenty-seven, twenty-three, for the amount of a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Claims have passed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.